I would like to call this work session to order, please. The only item on our agenda this evening is discussion of the Mountain Park Public Safety Services Agreement. I'll give you just a brief history and then I'll turn it over to staff. But basically, we entered into an agreement with Mountain Park in 1998 for $27,000 a year for public safety services. In 2009, we amended that agreement, and it was at 33,854 per year. That agreement involved an escalator, and according to the escalator, in 2021, that would equal $41,708 a year. So having said that, what we need to do is review it, review the agreement. Our legal department, and I'll turn it over to David, has sent them a notice that we are reviewing it and that there is the possibility of cancellation on March 1st. Is that correct, Mr. Davidson?
We were required to provide 90 days' notice if we were going to terminate the agreement. I did so, but I also included in there that it didn't prohibit any future discussions, ongoing discussions between our council and their council.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. So at this time, what I'd like to do is hand this over to the chiefs as far as informational items. Mr. Palmer, is there anything you'd like to add right now?
Just may I think it's important for a person to know, we did meet with Mountain Park at least one or two times.
Numerous occasions over the course of plus to two years?
Yeah, past couple of years. Trying to come to some sort of agreement on it, and we're kind of in the impasse at this point. So, you know, we're comparing what we charge our residents, their per capita cost compared to what Mountain Park is currently paying per capita of Mountain Park, and there's a big difference between those two numbers. So from a business standpoint, we thought it'd be wise for us to review this, and from a policy standpoint, the council needs to take a look at this, and, you know, I think it's just probably best just to open it up for your questions, and we'll answer what we can.
Do you want to talk about the difference? Who's going to address the?
I'll turn it over to Chief Calorid. You want to talk about the per capita cost?
Okay, yeah. Thank you. As the mayor mentioned, we've been providing E-911 police and fire rescue services to the city of Mountain Park under an intergovernmental agreement for a number of years. The 2021 rate for that is $41,708. This equates to approximately $64 per capita for a Mountain Park resident. A Roswell resident pays $374 per capita for the same service. This is not equitable. Additionally, the city of Roswell does not receive the associated 911 user fees for Mountain Park. Fines for traffic violations are levied in Mountain Park and retained by the city of Mountain Park. The city of Roswell is responsible for the hourly and overtime costs for officers testifying in Mountain Park court, and the city of Roswell is also responsible for potential liability costs, including lawsuits, workers' compensation, and pension obligations. I've been a part of a number of IGAs providing police service to a number of cities throughout my career. Two are still operating under that. All the negotiations that occurred, we determined that per capita cost is the most equitable way to share the expenses. Part of the expenses that are covered by this, not just calls for service or all the parts, which you may hear, are costs such as training, insurance, pension, command staff, support staff, investigators, SWAT team, vehicles, and equipment, which should be shared by all beneficiaries. Absent the current IGA, the city of Roswell is under no legal obligation to provide law enforcement or E-911 services to the city of Mountain Park. In fact, without an IGA, we cannot provide these services except in cases of emergency or mutual aid, and the fire chief would have to speak on the fire services that are provided. It's my recommendation that in order to continue to provide police and E-911 services to the city of Mountain Park, we would have to charge the same amount per capita that we charge Roswell citizens. We would also need to collect the E-911 user fees and have to have discussions about the fines and fees. Absent these measures, it's my recommendation to no longer provide police and E-911 services to the city of Mountain Park under the terms of the current IGA.
Thank you, Chief. Now I'll turn it over to our interim fire chief.
Good evening. The rental fire department responds to all fires in Mountain Park. It includes structure fires, vehicle fires, and brush fires. We respond to all EMS calls. We respond to non-fire emergencies such as gas leaks, wires down, gasoline leaks, and we also respond to non-emergency calls such as water leaks, turn-off water, broken water main, turn-off the water main, or hydrant, blockouts, and ambulance assists. The only, we provide this service with rescue trucks and fire engines. We do not respond to aerial units to Mountain Park for one of the biggest reasons is the smaller streets, it's very, very difficult to maneuver the bigger trucks through the smaller streets, so we don't send an aerial up there, and it's really hard to use them anyhow with the number of trees and the setback of the houses from the roadway. We don't really get a chance to use the aerials, so we don't take that up there. Mountain Park has a volunteer fire department. They have about eight to 12 members. They have one fire truck. So by themselves, they could not safely mount a fire attack or a rescue operation in a building that's on fire with two people in a truck or three people in a truck. So that's where it requires more of 16 to 20 firefighters to attempt a decent fire attack or a rescue attempt on a burning structure. Mountain Park currently receives automatic aid from Roswell Fire Department. They receive mutual aid from Cherokee Engine 10. Cherokee Engine 10 is located at Wiggly Road and Highway 92. They're about 2.8 miles away. The closest fire station Roswell has is Station 3 on Jones Road. It's 5.6 miles away, and Station 6 is 5.7 miles away, going to the same point in the center of Mountain Park. And then we respond on a fire to Mountain Park. We'll respond four engines, a rescue, a battalion chief. That gives us a minimum of 16 people to mount an attack, and then they will always respond their truck and whatever personnel they have on duty.
Thank you. Does council have any questions at this point in time? Y'all are being very quiet. Okay, well, we've got two folks in the audience that would like to speak. The first one is Mr. Keith Ridgway. We'll give Mr. Ridgway a minute to get set up.
Hey, good evening, folks. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I just wanted to say I appreciate the work and the diligence that you all are trying to meet with the city of Mountain Park. My comment was really, this is a business and economic decision. I wanted to offer, and I think the mayor's done us an absolutely wonderful job trying to articulate the differences with the unique community that we have in Mountain Park, and I just wanted to offer that, again, Mountain Park does not have a commercial base, so the proposed increase would actually be, you know, generally passed off on the citizens where we actually have a large number of elderly and lower income, people that have been here for a long time that are retired. So it's a burden, a tax burden that I would ask you all respectfully to consider, that the services I don't think are going to be similar to what other areas across Fulton County deal with, and I just wanted to say thank you again for, you know, the continued dialogue that you all are engaged with our city.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgway. I would like to point out, and perhaps the next speaker could elaborate on it, but I believe that the city of Mountain Park has approximately 200 residents, actual physical homes, and about 550 residents. That is much smaller than many of our neighborhoods, and the way that Mr. Ridgway just described Mountain Park, I could describe many of our neighborhoods that have an aging population. There, of course, is no commercial in them, and what I am looking at, and what I ask you all to consider, is the fact that if any one of our neighborhoods came to us and said, "We want to establish a call for service because we really don't have any crime, we don't have any fires, we really use the police very little, we just want to pay as we go." So I think that's something to consider with our neighborhoods that we currently oversee, and I would like that to be a consideration. The next person that would like, from the public that would like to speak is Elise Sutton? Ms. Sutton?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and I realize that this is a business forum and that this is a business decision for the city of Roswell, and it's an economic issue. I'm here today to maybe ask you to think about the impact that it might have to us as families and people. So I'd like to start out by saying that I understand where you guys are coming from, how the numbers might work out, that it might only seem fair to charge the homes of Mountain Park the same as all the other Mountain Park or all the other Roswell residences. But Mountain Park is not a neighborhood. Mountain Park is something different and something special, and I would hope that Roswell would appreciate that it has something so special right next door or as part of its neighbors. A huge increase in the cost or losing our charter would forever...
I'm sorry, Ms. Sutton, we lost you. Let me see if we can get you back.
Oh, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
I apologize, the computer decided to mute me. I'd like to say that it would forever change the lives of all the families in Mountain Park in a negative way. If we're forced to pay the increase, it's a huge cost to the residents, as the previous resident stated, or other option to give up our charter, which you've had since 1927. And from a historical factor, that would be very, very sad. Some of the people who have lived in this special community for multiple generations, personally, I lived in Mountain Park as a second-generation resident all of my life. Now I have a newborn that I have always dreamed of raising in our community. And the world today has many neighborhoods and HOAs and large cities where it can be difficult to connect. It's rare to find a small community where everyone knows each other with a true sense of belonging to that community, one where you know many people from your own childhood. Mountain Park is a special and magical place to the ones that live there, and I beg each of you to consider the effect of your decision on this matter and how it affects our human condition and the place we call home. And I hope that you will please find a way to work with us and to not only protect us with fire and police services, but also to protect our sense of identity and connectedness that we have in our home of Mountain Park. And outside of the numbers and the economical business decision of, is it fair to charge us the same amount, that there's something else to consider about why? Why would you do this to our families? Because it might make sense on paper, but it has a much bigger cost to all of us, and I'd just like for each of you to consider personally the cost that that might have for us as people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton, and I certainly do appreciate your sentiments. I will say that I grew up in a neighborhood here in Roswell, that today I lost a friend that I've known for 40 years from Martin's Landing, and I think that many of our neighborhoods could describe very much what Mountain Park is, and that's what makes Mountain Park special. That's also what makes the city of Roswell special, and that's why we choose to protect our neighborhoods and our citizens. So I really do appreciate that. In the beginning of this conversation, Mr. Palmer did mention that we've been in numerous meetings with your Mountain Park leaders over the last, probably close to, two years and have not been able to resolve this. So what I'm asking council to do this evening, and we'll bring this back to council, is any questions you have, please feel free to weigh in, comment, ask questions, but I'm going to be looking for your guidance as we move forward, because as Mr. Davidson stated, this contract will expire on March 1st. If you have any questions about anything that, any other options we have looked at, now's the time to discuss that. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Appreciate you bringing this forward. So I certainly think Mountain Park is a, you know, beautiful area. I definitely enjoy the, really, the nature aspect of it. There's some very tranquil parts, and it's certainly special, and to the mayor's point, just like, you know, a number of different neighborhoods and parks within Roswell that certainly have that nature aspect and just that beauty. At the end of the day, what I'm really focused on is making sure that we're treating Petopole fairly and especially making sure that we're protecting our, really fairness and equity for Roswell residents. So I certainly am supportive of providing services to Mountain Park residents, but at the same time, there needs to be equity with the Roswell, with Roswell residents. I'm fully opposed to Roswell subsidizing other communities. And so, and I think similar to the mayor's point, within Roswell, we certainly have a number of residents, whether older, on a fixed budget, and just for a number of other just challenges going on, that at the end of the day, I don't think it's right for Roswell residents to be subsidizing others for their service. So I definitely, I definitely will support something that ensures we move forward where everyone protected by our public safety is paying their fair share. And with that, if anything, my, to hear that we've been discussing this for two years, so I'm really glad that we finally have it in front of us. I would have preferred it even ahead of us, really, last year, because, again, knowing last year is obviously, obviously a tough one for many Roswell residents, and, again, the idea of them paying a greater amount for really the same service and ultimately subsidizing elsewhere, I think that's something we need to correct. And we do hear from different residents on something through public works. I know, I know in the past, we've heard if, when some residents use, have a smaller amount of trash, there's been requests or comments wanting to really pay less, and at the end of the day, Roswell has a system that, which makes it more just manageable of just making sure Roswell residents are paying similar type fees, and I think public safety is the same way. So, again, chiefs, thank you for the presentation. Mayor, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, councilmember Palermo. And as first a timeline goes, I would like to stress two things. The first thing I'd like to stress is we tried to give Mountain Park apple opportunity, ample, I should say, opportunity to try to come up with ways that we could resolve this. We've had issues where, while we provide 911 services, Mountain Park wasn't actually collecting their 911 fees. Fulton County was. I think that they've resolved that. We also offered our, the full breadth of what we have here at City Hall in terms of our finance department in order for them to look at these various options, and so we tried to give Mountain Park a great deal of latitude to let them chart the path on their own, and that was not very fruitful. So, and then, of course, we hit a global pandemic, so, and things, you know, our priorities shifted, and then, of course, you know, I don't, I don't want to hammer any person, whether it's Mountain Park or the city of Roswell during a global pandemic. I think we all need to be understanding, so, so that's why it's taken us so long to get to this point, and I'm perfectly patient about that, but we do need to make a decision. Do we have any additional comments from council? Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Assuming that at a future meeting, this council decides to not continue the services, what would a transition look like? Where, in the immediate aftermath, would they get fire, police, ambulance, 911 service?
And I'll let staff answer that. Who wants to jump in first, the chiefs or Mr. Palmer?
Well, as far as fire protection, they do have a small volunteer fire department, but like I said, they won't be able to safely mount a fire attack or a rescue with the number of personnel. They could ask for mutual aid from Cherokee County or Cobb County, which Cobb is almost 10 miles away. From a fire standpoint, it'd be very difficult for the fire department, because we sort of have, in a fire situation, an emergency situation, we sort of have a moral and public obligation to respond if they, if they call us, but we would be looking to, for policy from county mayor and council as to how we would react to that.
Chief Calorid?
So for police service, I mentioned that city of Roswell is under no obligation to provide law enforcement services. However, the sheriff's office is. Whatever that agreement they would have to come to is between them and the Fulton County sheriff or the Cherokee County sheriff, because a small portion of their city is within Cherokee County. They also have the option of the Fulton County Police Department, which is still here, that they could enter into a similar IGA with.
Councilmember Wilsey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for scheduling the work session and bringing all this forward. Question I have is how do other cities who have such arrangements handle the costs associated with it? Is there a model that we can look to elsewhere in the state just to make sure that it's, that it is, you know, we are handling it in a fair way?
Chief Calorid?
The ones that I'm familiar with, there were four cities within my prior jurisdiction that we had intergovernmental agreements with. Two are still in existence, and they do it exactly as proposed, it's a per capita, and in Cav County, they have a special services tax district for law enforcement services, and those are collected by the tax commissioner.
Councilmember Wilsey, did you have an additional comment? You're muted, so I wasn't sure if you were...
No, I would just like, I will do a little bit more follow-up research on those jurisdictions and some follow-up discussions, so, thank you.
Councilmember Judy?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, this is a tough decision for all people when it comes to making decisions about public safety, and, you know, the most important thing, speaking to both chiefs' statements there, is that, you know, they won't be left out in the cold. There has to be some type of response, so that's comforting. What is the next step in this process? Is it, does this come to committee and council, or are you just looking for any direction tonight if anybody opposes canceling this on March 1st, knowing it's a work session? I didn't know if we could make that decision in the work session.
Well, I'll turn this over to Mr. Davidson. What I'm looking for is guidance to just get your opinions on this. I have discussed this with council for many months, and we've got several options. We can just let the contract expire on March 1st. We can go back to Mountain Park and say, "We are requesting you pay $374 per capita to move this contract forward," but I'm looking for some direction from council, because certainly this is not my call to make. I'm here to provide you with the information so that you all can give me guidance, just what direction you want to go with this and what you're thinking. So, right now, I'm not getting any guidance, so if you all could help me with that, I'd appreciate it. Councilmember Judy?
To that point, I would say my feeling right now is to give them the opportunity to match what it costs Roswell taxpayers to continue service. I think right now, that's the only option I see for Roswell at this point, so that's my opinion.
Thank you, councilmember Judy. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with councilmember Palermo and councilmember Judy. I think that it would be most fair to go to the per capita cost should they want to continue after the expiration of the contract, and in the next 12 months, we can certainly investigate to see if there could be other options to somehow mitigate that cost so that perhaps it's not going on beyond 12 months, and perhaps they can seek out other jurisdictions, jurisdictions like Cherokee County to enter into an agreement with.
Thank you, councilmember Hall. I'm just a little bit confused, because if we go with the per capita, it would be $374 per capita going forward, and that is what I'm hearing the council saying is an equitable way to go on this. Now, I also agree with councilmember Judy that we need to go back with, go back to Mountain Park and tell them that the direction the council is going is that they need to match what our residents pay in public safety. So I need to know if you support that, if you don't support that. I think, right now, I'm just doing a tally here. I've got councilmember Hall saying she supports Judy and Palermo, which would be at the $374 per capita, but then councilmember Hall's leaving it open for other opportunities, and to me, when I see the other opportunities are, is whether or not they can contract with another jurisdiction of which, in the meantime, they would pay the rate that we had prescribed. So, councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. My view is, I mean, is clear, is fairness and is not subsidizing with taxpayer, Roswell taxpayers' money, because we also have a very diverse demographic. We also have elderly people with a fixed income, so we may have even similar demographic to Mountain Park. So for me, it's fairness. Fairness and of not subsidizing with Roswell taxpayers other city services. We provide a good service, so my guidelines will be to make an offer for them to pay as much as every single resident in the city of Roswell pay, taxpayers pay, and then give them 30 days, what is March 1st, or more than 30 days, for them to make a decision. Is this something that they can work with, and they are happy with the level of service and the cost involving this per capita, or they need to look for other options that is similar service for less money? But using Roswell taxpayers' money to subsidize other cities, I don't think we're in a situation to do that. I don't think we're in a position to do that, and I don't think even that it's fair to do that. So my guidelines is go with what Roswell pay per capita and offer the same amount to the residents of Mountain Park.
Thank you, councilmember Zapata. Yes, councilmember Tyser?
Thank you, Mayor.
So seeing which way this is heading, in the event, excuse me, that they can't or choose not to afford that. Again, my concern is that we have with them a robust transition plan so that, you know, they're not left with the kinds of dangers that one of the speakers just said. So, you know, how we transition, how, you know, how long that takes, I can't tell you. But it just seems to me like there needs to be some kind of plan so that their citizens, you know, aren't left, you know, in a situation of danger. It sounds like there are plenty of options. And it sounds like that if this is not affordable, as stated in Mayor Still's response to you, it seems like they probably ought to get busy working on that transition plan and where they're going to get those services from.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So based on the sounds of things, it sounds like there's a lot of consensus around an equitable fee. And regarding transition plan, what I'd recommend on both sides, if there's not an interest in choosing to pay the same amount that per capita Roswell residents pay, then that transition plan should probably be starting tomorrow, just given the fact that we know when that expiration date is and just want to make sure that there's no surprises for the Roswell side nor the Mountain Park side.
Thank you, Councilmember Palermo, and I agree with you. I think that we need to set firm deadlines on this transition period. Because if we don't hold our feet to the fire, no one else is going to. So thank you. Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe my question is to public safety head of departments, what is it going to take for Mountain Park to do a transition, you know, outside Roswell providing the service? Is 30 days enough for them to make a transition? 60 days, 90 days? I don't know what is technically the right number of days to have a smooth transition from Roswell to other options that might be more convenient for them.
And I'll let public safety answer that question. But I would also like to remind council that we have been in discussions about this for some time. It has been clear to the leadership of Mountain Park that we were going toward the per capita fee. And so I am assuming, and I do that generously, I am assuming that they are already in the process of transitioning because we basically asked them to do that already. So chiefs, have you been, Chief Conroy, have you been in a position where you had to require a transition period?
Without knowing the details, who they've been in communication with, it's my understanding they have communicated with several of the other entities that I mentioned earlier. I don't know how long it would take to school up the resources. That'd be a question that would have to be asked of whoever their contracted vendor would be, the sheriff's office. It just depends on how long it would take them to stand up an officer and then work out the details of having a vehicle, an officer assigned, radio, and transferring the 911 services. I didn't answer your question, but I don't know that I have the exact answer to that question.
From the fire standpoint, we've never had to transition like that. All the surrounding jurisdictions, we have mutual aid or automatic aid agreements, as with Mountain Park. If those aid agreements go away, then we're not obligated to respond to help them. So that's, we're sort of waiting to see what happens here before we would enter into a transition period.
If I could add just one thing from my experience. My only experience with this for the transition period were departments that started up brand-new police departments from scratch, not from one that was transitioning service. So I am aware of some that started up police departments ordering uniforms, ordering vehicles. And that's a different transition time period than when we talk with an established law enforcement agency.
Well, and I would also like to add that we have offered, I think I mentioned this in the beginning, we have offered our services. We've got a very professional police and fire department as well as a finance department. And I can go on and on. And I realize that Mountain Park is a small, very small city, and they don't have the resources that we have. And we have offered to help in any way that we can to move this forward. So, and I am fully supportive of that. You know, we've got a great staff here that can help them implement a new plan, help them get moving forward. Like I said, they helped with the 911. But, you know, we've just, it has come to the point where we need to decide how we're going to move forward. And as I'm looking at it, I feel as though what your direction is is that we send Mountain Park a letter requesting the per capita costs. And as soon as we receive a response on that, I will, of course, forward that to you all. But right now, as of March 1st, our contract is over with Mountain Park. So if we decide that we want to extend that, that's a conversation for another day. But right now, I'll move forward with extending this $374 per capita to them and wait for their response on that. Does anyone have an objection to that? And like I said, we're not here to do something heavy-handed. We're here to help. That Mountain Park is our neighbor. And we certainly don't want to do anything that is... I know this is going to be difficult for Mountain Park residents, but as I said earlier, we've got to look out for our residents as well. And if we can, if, we're not in a position to subsidize another city. And that's basically what is being requested of us by Mountain Park. So hopefully, we can transition into the per capita fees. And perhaps we can come to an agreement with them and hopefully it'll be as painless as possible. We're here to help. So, okay, well, thank you. Anybody else have a comment, council? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
Real quick, I don't know if there's anything out there or if they used this. I know you gave them a full use of City Hall. But maybe there is some kind of grant, a safety grant for cities in these situations when they become bigger. I don't know if there's a grant out there that they can look at, but it'd probably worth looking for if there, because there's grants for all types of things. Sure, you've already been down that road, but just wanted to throw it out there.
Well, and I would like to add that we've got a grant department that does a great job. And the grant department is at their disposal as well. Additional comments? I believe I've got your marching orders, and our work session is adjourned. Thank you.